We have one hour.
All right.
Testing. Say yes. Yes. Sorry about that. Welcome to the August 20th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission. Right now, we are waiting for one more commissioner to join us. So we will have a quorum. We only have three at this point. So just bear with us. We're hoping some, but one of the others will chime in very soon. We don't, we didn't hear that they weren't going to be here, but except for one commissioner. So we're hoping the others will, will join us. So we're just going to give it a second. So Noah's in? So it looks like we now have a quorum with Noah joining us. So in accordance with the executive order N-29-20, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. You can go to the Planning Commission website and look at the information on how to join us, either by telephone or through Zoom on the computer. And I will leave that up to you to do that. With that, I will call this meeting to order and ask for everybody to join me in the salute to the flag.
Praise the allegiance to the flag, African prince, and Americans. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Bonjio.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let you know that I got a text from Brian Mitchell apologizing that he has a conflict right now, but he should join us by 7:00 PM, he says.
Thank you for letting us know that, Noah. Suzanne, would you please take a roll call?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonjio.
Present.
Commissioner Pala Green.
Present.
Commissioner Levy.
Present.
Commissioner Newman.
Present.
And Commissioner McCaver, are you out there?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Director, do we have some modifications tonight?
Yes, we do have modifications to the agenda. The modification that we have is item H1 is being continued to the meeting of September 17th. That's an application for Rolling Meadows. And so, and a vote on that to continue it to September 17th.
Should we do that when we get there, or would you like to just take care of that now?
Well, if there's anybody who's watching.
That's true, that would have any comment. Okay. We'll get to that when we get to H1.
And there's several supplementals. I apologize for all the supplementals. We have supplementals for E2, E3, E4, E5, E6, G1, and H2, and H3. Many of those came in this afternoon. I do apologize for the lateness of those, but we got them to you as soon as we received them.
Thank you very much. We are going to go to public comment, but I am going to tell you tonight, we have 46 attendees and 20 panelists. We are going to be putting the timer on and limiting you to the usual three minutes because we have a lot of people, it appears, that want to have discussions. So to be fair to everybody, we're going to, going to use the timer tonight. Okay. With that, I'm going to open the public comment, and this is for any item that is not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to speak. Just getting over to attendees. Yes. So I see one hand up, and I will give the, let number seven, four, five, four have.
Hello, it's Kent Solotzky, and I'm back.
I could have won dead on that.
Just, just to let you know, there's probably about a 15-second lag between what we're hearing on the telephone and what's on the screen as far as timing goes, for that might be your waiting period this time. I spent 30 days down in Mexico, and planning's a lot easier down there. Part of what you're going to find now is our economy, I went to LAX, and your planning is going to be based upon economy that very soon could be close to nonexistent. And people don't quite understand, the total flights coming into LAX at this time are less than 10% on the, on the international flights than normal. So be prepared for that in your planning and everything else you're doing in life. I, I will reiterate, and I will be pulling things from your agenda here, and I've asked before, that any, any project that has generators in it, and I think there's probably oh, two or three of them here, which I will be pulling, to talk about. If your staff would go ahead and, and have on their notation generator power but will be phased out in two years, or something like other acceptable thing, I won't have to be pulling these and making your meetings go longer. So this is a general comment. Highly recommend that you do that. I had a, had a good conversation with Director Ford today, and I think I got a little clarity on some things. So hopefully that's been ironed out. So I guess we can go ahead and, and get on with this meeting. Those are some general input things that, again, anything that goes before the zoning administrator or anything that, that is not clearly identified as having a, a phasing out of generators to solar or some other source of power, I will be requesting to be pulled. So you can be aware of that. Thank you for my opportunity to speak, and I'm not sure how great it is to be back, but I'm back.
Well, it's, it's good to have you back, Kent. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public comment, on any issue that is not on the agenda? I'm not seeing any other hands, but I'll give it a, a second because we have a delay time. So seeing no hands come up, oh, go ahead, Director. Oh, I thought, thought you, I'm sorry. So seeing no hands come up, we will now move to the consent agenda. And I will go through, we have a, a rather lengthy consent agenda, whole agenda tonight, but the consent agenda especially. And I go, I will go through each project and ask if there's anybody who would like that polled. So starting with number one, it's the Holly Car conditional use permit in the Garberville area. Is there anybody that would like to see this issue polled? I see a hand up from an attendee, so I will pull that one for public comment. And we will move to item number two. Excuse me, we will move to item number two with, which is Enchanted Farms LLC, conditional use permit, special permit in the Willow Creek area. Are, is there anybody or any commissioners that would like that polled? I s, I see at least one, two hands up. So that will be polled from the consent. Item number three is the Dean Crisp Conditional Use Permit, Titlow Hill area. Is there anybody that wishes to have this polled from consent? Seeing a hand, this will be polled.
The hand, was it from me, Alan?
Uh, actually, it was from an attendee.
Okay. I just had a question on it, so it will be polled then, okay?
It, it is polled. So, so far, we're three for three. Number four is Rockway Investments LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bridgeville area. And I am seeing at least one hand up, so we will pull that one. Let's see. Item number five is River Bar Lavender Farm LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Heightsville area. Is there anybody who wants this one polled? Seeing no hands, I will leave this one on consent and move to number six. Number six, and the last one on consent, is Yeti Enterprises LLC Conditional Use Permit in the McKinleyville area. Is there anybody who wants to have this one polled from consent? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. So the way I see it is we have items number five and six that will, will stay on consent, and the rest are going to be polled from consent, and, and we will have a public meeting on them. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items number five and six.
So we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve items number five and six, and I will name those so that we know what we were approving. Item number five was River Bar Lavender Farm LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Heightsville area. And item number six was Yeti Enterprises LLC Conditional Use Permit in the McKinleyville area. So Suzanne, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonjio. Commissioner Pala Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
And Commissioner McCaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, so we will now go through, go back to item number one on the consent agenda, which was the Holly Car Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. And I would ask for a staff report, please. I don't know who the staff is on this one. What you thought, John? That's about what you thought, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Twenty-three thousand, that's a lot of. That one in McCann is maybe, that's something. It's a big project. Looks like a good project, but big.
All right. Any commissioners? Am I ready to present?
Yes, you are. Please go ahead.
My name is Christopher Alberts, and I am the assigned planner for the Holly Cars Conditional Use Permit. Am I showing the correct screen right now?
Yes.
For the presentation?
Yes, you are.
Can, can you make it full screen? That's what I was curious about.
Hit, hit the thing that looks like the, the monitor, and that will, there you go.
Is that working?
No. F11?
Is that better?
Chris, try F11.
It, it shows there going into the big screen on my computer, it's just not on your side is the issue.
Now try F11.
Oops. No. Let me try it. Let me try it something real quick. Better? There we are. Okay. So my name is Christopher Alberts, and I'm the assigned planner for the Holly Cars Conditional Use Permit. The proposed projects for a, will allow for the cultivation of 23,300 square feet of existing outdoor canvas cultivation. The proposed project also requires onsite relocation, so which I'll go into further detail in this presentation. Processing such as drying and curing will occur onsite within two different ag tents on the subject parcel. And further processing such as trimming and packing gene will occur offsite at a licensed processing facility. The applicant anticipates four employees will be working onsite during the peak season, and power will be sourced from generators. The project is located in the Garberville area off of Tubey Ranch Road from Alder Point Road. Alder Point Road is a, is on the green list from the Department of Public Works, and it meets the equivalent functional capacity of a category four road. This is a copy of the proposed site map for the project. We have cultivation over here on the north, east side of the parcel, as well as the southwest. The CDFW resource map did not identify any threatened or endangered species on the subject parcel. However, there is a northern spot at our activity center located 3.9 miles south from the project site, as well as marble mill habitat is located 4.73 miles east from the project site. Noise and light intonation measures are required as condition of approval because there will be propagation occurring on site. The annual water use is 220,850 gallons. And there's 72,000 gallons of water storage on site. Project, our source is from a well. After doing a well analysis, I did find that the well was 200 feet in deep and penetrates through sandstone and quartz, and is, and both wells are over 2,000 feet in elevation and about 2,581 feet east from the Buck Mountain Creek. The proposed onsite relocation will move cannabis from different APNs that make up one legal parcel. The cannabis that's being relocated is currently in areas that aren't considered environmentally superior due to slopes and due to slopes and other environmental things on site. The onsite relocation will pre, agent, that way it states that the onsite relocation will prevent habitat fragmentation and allow for removal of cultivation waste. And the cannabis will be relocated onto a site that will be located on slopes of 15% or less, also on primatic soils. Any questions?
Any questions of commissioners or staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
So how far away is electricity from this location? Existing ones?
I'm not 100% sure, sure, based on the electric, where electricity is located, and the applicant or agent is not here to help answer that question. However, the applicant did let me know that the generator being used is a small Honda generator that, that would be used very minimally as the cannabis is for outdoor. And processing is also occurring offsite.
Is, is there something that I'm, can't find in the staff report about sound? Whereabouts is that?
So the shed is, or the generator is in a containment shed. The project is conditioned for sound to be at the 50 decibels or less, that probability.
Thank you.
Any other question, questions of commissioners for staff? Seeing no hands up, I am going to now open this up to public to have comments, and we have one attendee. Let me switch over.
So I was the one who pulled this one. Thank you for having it pulled. I drive down a very back road in Mexico, third world country, driving along there, and when there's a, there's a very nice solar array that would definitely handle the power they have here in a third world country. There's no reason to have a generator here. I'm, I'm sitting looking at a, a, it's called a solar generator. It takes 500 watts power max, and it will produce 1,500 watts, which is quite, quite probably the size of that little generator, you know, that they have out there. And, and I think I, it, they cost like 2,200. So there really is, is no reason to have generators in these plans whatsoever for any reason. And I'm, this, I pulled this because of that, and I will continue to pull them as long as you have a generator that you don't have to be phased out and replaced by solar or other sources of power, especially on one of this which is not a great amount of money to replace. The technology's there. We're not, we're not even in a third world country where, where the agricultural people there run their systems off of solar now. So I just, just befuddles me that staff is even considering bringing forward a, a generator. And if you're going to do it, say, well, we already own the generator, but they're willing to phase it out within two years. It's unfortunate. In fact, just about unforgivable that your people are not available to answer questions on these permits. And I, I think maybe it should be pulled and postponed until such time as the consideration of participation by the person making the application is there, so that you can talk to them. And they may just say, hey, it's great to go solar. I'd love to do it, happy to do it, but we can't do that, can we? So this is very unfortunate. I also have concerns, of course, regarding the location, regarding the habitat, and, you know, the, the mullets and the owls and all those kind of things. Even if you mitigate these problems, and we've discussed that before, these are not the kind of locations where these things should be continued to permit, but at least not having generators. I mean, I'm not asking too much, and, and I will continue to pull. It'd be really easy, you know, and, and when I pull one, it's usually going to be pretty simple. There's going to be a generator, you know, thing down there. Of course, I did learn about the habitat, which was great to know. So I'm asking you to make as a condition of this approval, if you're going to approve it, that this person come up, and within a certain reasonable timeframe, and I think two years, for this small amount of cost, would be, be reasonable to convert over to, to solar or some other force of, source of power rather than a generator, be it wind or, or a PG&E hookup. So thank you for my opportunity to make this humble request.
Thank you, Kent. Good, good comment. Any other commenters? And I would really love to hear from the applicant if they're out there.
So the applicant did just message me stating that they'll definitely set up a solar system, and it's not a problem at all. So I'd be more than likely to make that a condition of approval for this project.
Okay. That sounds good. So seeing no other attendees, I'm going to close the public comment on this issue and bring it back to the commission, and I will do that now. Is there any discussion on this issue? Go ahead, Mike.
So that, that is really helpful. That helps me on a decision to not delay this anymore with this conversion and going to better conditioned land so that this outdoor grow can be relocated. And with the applicant agreeing to replace the generator within two years with either solar or wind, I would move to approve this, this conditional use permit. But I'm waiting for any other comments from any other commissioners.
Well, I see Melanie has her hand up, so go ahead, Melanie.
Yes, thank you. I think in, in order to be fair, I mean, last time we had a couple of projects that, you know, didn't really have environmental impacts. Indeed, one of them had zero environmental impacts and no generator at all. And we often have projects that are much larger with more generators that get approved. And so I think it would be a good idea if we're going to make this a condition of approval for this small operation that has pretty much just a backup generator. We should probably give the public our sort of word that we are planning to make this a condition of approval. I mean, it's, otherwise, it, it, you know, it doesn't give confidence to the other applicants that they know what is expected.
Thank you, Melanie. Anybody else who has comments? Well, seeing none, I would ask Commissioner.
Question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, just in reference to Commissioner McCaver, her request there is, do you think we would need to make a threshold size condition? And do we have any information about what kind of solar arrays replace whatever wattage of generators from the staff?
Commissioner, yeah, Director.
Thank you. At this time, we do not have that kind of information. And there are different variables here. This, this generator is being used for non-cultivation purposes. It's related to the ancillary activities going on on the site, not the cultivation. So that's something that I would prefer to come back to you with some more information. Um, so that's something that I would prefer to come back to you with some more information before trying to answer something.
Uh, should we have that as a motion, Director, that we would like to have some sort of policy be crafted in terms of a threshold for generators?
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you. Um, yes, I think that that would be an appropriate action and I think it actually would be appropriate to ask the board to give direction on that, uh, because while the CCLUO does address generators, the CMLUO does not. And, and to point out, it was acted upon, it was the specific direction of that ordinance to not change the rules on existing applicants and would be a change in direction for those existing applicants.
Yes, I agree. Um, so, I, I mean, you can, uh, weigh in here if this doesn't sound right, but, um, I'd like to motion to request a policy be drafted uh, for the use of generators, in particular solar, uh, generators, the replacement of generators with solar generators. And request that the board review this request before the policy is crafted.
So is that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure how that last part fit in, Commissioner McAvoy.
Uh, you were saying that you would like to have the board review it and I thought by that you meant that you would like to have them review our request for a policy before you actually craft it?
Exactly. Thank you.
Yes, that's how I phrased it.
Okay.
And question, um, for Melanie there on that. When you say solar generators, you mean solar arrays and/or wind?
Uh, well, there are, uh, solar generators now. They, I, I just happen to have looked into them for myself because as we all know, their, um, apparently outages may or may not be imminent. And they really don't have great solar generators for anything that would power more than, let's say, a couple of fridges and small appliances. So I do know that. I can't give you the specifics because of, like I said, I was just researching it for myself. Um, but they, they do, they're not substantial in terms of, uh, you know, generators. So it's not like we, we could even replace generators with solar generators if we're talking about serious use of generators. Um, so we're really, yeah, so that it's, it's replacing, you know, it's going to be, that's why we need a threshold. It's going to be replacing these smaller backup generators basically with, um, a solar generator. But, you know, of course, if the commission is interested, we could also ask, um, for a review of our policies in terms of requiring solar arrays as well. But that is not what I made the motion for, so we, we would have to change that or add an additional one.
The director would like to comment on this.
Uh, one of the things that I want to be cautious of and I'm starting to feel uncomfortable with is that we're entering into a conversation that is not on the agenda.
Yeah.
And so it's probably really important for the commission simply at this point to make a motion to ask to have this agendized and bring it back for the commission. And then the commission, out of an agendized item, can make that recommendation and request to the board.
Thank you. I like that idea a lot because then we could also have public comment on it, which would undoubtedly improve the, the request. So I can change it if you'd like now.
Please do.
Okay, so I'll motion to request that the, um, substitution of small generators for solar generators and possible policy implications be agendized for the next meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. This is Noah.
So we have a motion and a second and a discussion. This is Noah. Seeing none, we, I would ask Suzanne for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bonje?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now let's, we'll come back to the, the actual, um, project, which is the Holly Car conditional use permit and discuss that. So I'm not exactly sure where we were. We kind of got off on a tangent. So any commissioners that have any discussion on this?
Uh, I guess one question for our commission would be, do we want to make this a condition of approval this week before we, um, basically put the very same question on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes.
So one of the, if I can through the chair, one of the different aspects of this is the applicant has already agreed to this. So you are free to impose that condition without policy implication.
So it sounds like that could be included in this project and it wouldn't be any issues. So do, I believe we had a motion back when we were talking before, but if not, would somebody please make one? It didn't.
Yes, I, I talked about that. I said that my, uh, what I wanted to see was, um, that I would approve this. If we could have a two-year cap, uh, directive on the, uh, replacement of the generator with, um, solar. Um, so I'll go ahead and make that motion. I, uh, define the planning commission as considered the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance and make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit based on the evidence on the staff report with the addition of the, uh, timeframe, uh, to replace the, uh, gas or diesel generator with solar or wind, whatever, um, does not use fuel. And adopt the resolution approving the proposed Holly Car conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion and the second? Seeing none, Suzanne, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Bonje?
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. So now we'll move on to the second, uh, one that was pulled, which is Enchanted Farms LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Willow Creek area. I would ask for a staff report, please.
Can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Deacon Commissioners, I'm Portia Slosino, the assigned planner for this project. And this is an application for conditional use permit for Enchanted Farms LLC, which was processed under the commercial cannabis land use ordinance. The proposed project is located at 20201 Enchanted Springs Lane in Willow Creek. The parcel is approximately 1.47 acres in size with a land use designation of residential estates and zoned agricultural general. The conditional use permit is to allow the continued operation of an existing 3,000 square foot outdoor light deprivation, commercial cannabis cultivation area within the Willow Creek community planning area. The applicant is requesting approval for an exception from the prescribed open air cultivation setback requirements. The applicant does not anticipate the odor from the proposed cultivation activities at this site, uh, will negatively impact the local community. And as many of the neighbors are going through the cannabis utilization process as well. A special permit is also being sought for the relaxation of the 600-foot setback from Six Rivers National Forest. And the biological report was conducted for the project parcel by Natural Resources Management Corporation. And the findings of the report indicate that no habitat nor special status species were identified in the vicinity of the project. This is the site plan. Um, this project is approximately 2.5 miles east of Highway 299 in Willow Creek. Depicted here are the, um, 300 foot and 600 foot setbacks, uh, for the cultivation site as well as an aerial view of the neighborhood. In green here, you can see the outdoor cultivation footprint. You can see enough for 3,000 square feet. Um, using light deprivation within two 30 by 50 foot greenhouses. The applicant also proposes a 300 square foot ancillary propagation space within a 10 by 30 foot, uh, greenhouse. That ancillary space will be outfitted with fluorescent street lighting and the applicant anticipates two cultivation cycles for you. The source of the water is from the community service district of Willow Creek. Uh, current water storage capacity on site is a 500 gallon mixing tank. And, um, proposed is a 2,500 gallon hard tank, um, for fire suppression. The projected annual water use is 168,000 gallons. Processing is proposed to, to occur onsite in the building labeled garage on the site plan. No, no employees are proposed. The power is provided by PG&E. Security includes, um, the applicants residing on site, heated and locked entrances, guard dogs, and a fenced cultivation. So in addition to the site plan and the cultivation and operations plan, all of these documents provided evidence that the project is consistent with the mitigated negative declaration for the CCLUO. And an addendum was prepared for this project and is, um, in the staff report in attachment three. So there were, there was a public comment, um, and as required by the CCLUO, um, a notice of evacuation was sent out on February 4th um, for property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel. And as a result of this notification, uh, the county did receive one letter in opposition to the project and the duplicate of that letter is actually included in the supplemental for tonight. Um, just dated, um, a date of this, from this week. The letter was written by a neighboring property owner whose property is approximately 500 feet from the project parcel. Um, the opposition to the project from the neighbor is, um, concerns regarding the odor from the unenclosed cannabis cultivation. And there's also concerns regarding runoff that could pollute the creeks and springs adjacent to the property. Um, the county believes that compliance with the state water board's statewide cannabis order will ensure that runoff from the site does not impact adjacent property or water bodies. The nearest creek is, um, Full House Creek in Overton, North Carolina, right? Um, the odor of unenclosed cannabis is something that is not adequately addressed, um, by the, um, permit application. So, um, the property being 500 feet from the proposed cultivation should help to allow some dissipation of the odor. However, uh, the concern can only be mitigated by the enclosure of the cannabis operation. I would like to point out that several letters of support were received for this project from, um, the Enchanted Springs community. All, and I looked at the map and it's all but the one person in the community that, um, was opposed that wrote the letter. Um, the planning commission, um, staff recommends, uh, consider that the concern from the neighboring property owner in determining whether to approve the proposed 1,000 square foot cultivation project. It's a recommendation of staff that the planning commission find the project consistent with the previously adopted mitigated mitigation. Make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and special permit subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Portia. Is there any questions from commissioners for staff?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I had a question for Portia, um, because you kind of, your sound was kind of going soft at times and I couldn't hear when you were talking about odor mitigation on, um, with neighbors. You said two of them that were close by or the closest one is the one that is opposing?
Um, it's not the closest one. It's, um, I think it's a parcel away from the actual project site. Can you hear me okay? I should get a microphone.
Yeah, I hear you now. Yeah.
Like closer to my computer. Um, and so, uh, no, it wasn't directly next. There was only one opposition letter. It was sent twice from the same person.
Right, from the Tonkins. How far away are they from, are they within the parameters of what the ordinance says? Is that what the, um, uh, the odor mitigation requirements that are trying to be relaxed here? Is it because of where they're at or others?
It's because of, um, yes, it does apply to them, but, um, this applicant has requested a conditional use permit because within the CCLUO that is allowed, um, to move forward in that fashion. So you have the planning commission decide. I think it's a 600 foot square back normally. And if Cliff would like to comment.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Sure. Um, so because this is in a community planning area, there is the odor control requirements that are in the, uh, CCLUO. And they require that you do one of a few different things to, um, uh, address those community concerns. So one of those is to enclose your cultivation. Another one would be to show that you are, um, more than 600 feet away from any adjacent residences or residentially zoned property. And then the other two options would be to, um, obtain a special permit for approval if there is no public controversy. The last option is to obtain approval of a conditional use permit if there's public controversy. And so that's what's happening here is there is, um, there are residences which are within 600 feet. They are not enclosing with, um, you know, carbon filtration or other odor control measures. And they cannot pursue the special permit because at least one neighbor is, um, opposed to this project. So that's why, um, basically they're going through that conditional use permit process here. Hope that clarifies things.
Want to speak? Thank you, Cliff. Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I am going to, we have three, uh, attendees, so I'm going to open this up for public comment. Let me get over there. The first public speaker is 3053. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was trying to comment once you guys started talking about generator use on the last project, so I apologize.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the second commenter, which is 7454. I recognize that number. Go ahead, Mr. Swat.
Alan just can't hear, but I had a little bit of a lag there again. You know, this one, the generator's fine, you know, but it just had so many red, other red flags to it. I know we don't seem to get any comment back, obviously can't from Six Rivers National Forest, I don't think, isn't that an adage? And they can't make comment. Eventually, my anticipation is they will be making comment eventually on all of these projects that this has happened when they have a certain policy come into effect. So I'm not going to deal with that, but you do have a community planning area. And that's there for a reason. And I was a little bit remiss when Portia said, well, most of the people in the area don't object because they're in the planning process and they're going to do this, but it's a community planning area and each person in that community has the right to have their concerns addressed. And appears that, if I understood there, I was a little bit garbled, that the Tonkens family has requested that they do not waive the odor mitigation requirements within the planning area. And so there seems to be a tendency sometimes to just override what's going on to the detriment of people within the community. You have a protection that was designed and I think it would be totally appropriate to put a condition on here that this particular facility, because of its location, be enclosed and have your carbon filtration on it. It's not that gigantic a thing. It's not, you know, I don't know exactly what's going on there, but you do have, you do have a problem here. And so to avoid that problem, I think you should go to, I feel a reasonable thing is to go ahead and have them mitigate that. It's doable. And if they decide not to do that, then of course, maybe they don't belong in that business. But your job is to eliminate or minimize, part of your job is to minimize neighborhood disputes. You set up the community planning. The other thing is when you have a community planning area, this is an area, and I guess this would be the services district that would have site, have they been contacted and have they said it's okay to do it? So that's one of my questions of whoever the representative for the community other than the individual has been contacted, not just they've been contacted, but they say they have no problem with it. And, and then of course, we will deal with the individual. So I would ask that this either be tabled until that be verified. And then I also asked that if it's moved forward, that the, the person in the neighborhoods request be made to mitigate this. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your input. The next speaker would be 2152, please. Are you there, 2152?
Am I 2152? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Mr. Sanchez and I've been listening to the commentary on this latest proposal. And I do live downstream from the proposed project. And I have lived in Willow Creek since 1990, since 2000, actually on and off since 1996 or so, so going on 24 years. And I can tell you for the last few years, especially in the summer with harvest, the smell of the, and the scent of marijuana prompts us to close our doors. And it's just as bad as the smoke, if not worse, because my wife is sensitive as well as I am to seasonal allergic rhinitis type symptoms. And so unless it is proposed to have a seal on this type of activity, I am very much opposed because we're less than 600 feet from there. Also, do you all know that the school, Christian School Boundary is a couple of hundred feet away from the proposed lot activity?
I can, I can speak. I have contacted that the person who's with the community service district, who is the person who is, who can share the water bill for that site. That hasn't been a school for several years and it's going up for sale this year.
Okay. And that notwithstanding, I can just tell you that the way the, being downhill from the facility and also increased traffic, it's of concern. Have no control over the traffic flow, but if there's anything you can do, I appreciate the opportunity to listen to our concerns.
Thank you, Speaker. The next speaker is Nadalin Delap.
Mute.
You there, Nadalin?
I am here. Hey there, this is Nadalin Delap with Humboldt County Growers Alliance, just listening in. This is not one of our members' projects, but paying attention to what's going on. This is a 3,000 square foot pre-existing cultivation site. So this is about as small as it gets to be commercially viable. And to take something that is outdoor, that is not using energy and to stick it in an enclosed system requires fans, dehumidification. It requires a lot of energy to keep the system cool and prevent molds and moisture buildup. So what, if you're asking to put it in an enclosed structure, then does have a big impact on energy use. It also would preclude this farm from being able to be part of this in-ground, full sun terroir that we've been talking about as a community and the importance of that. And then just finally, I think it is unreasonable that we have to have 100% unanimous support for projects like this. And if there is a single person who does not like it, that, that can put a stop to projects like this. I just think that that is an unreasonable barrier that people have to move forward and there's going to be more projects like this that are coming before the commission. And if there's one person that says that they don't like the smell of cannabis, now that project has to go inside an enclosed box. I just think that that is beyond acceptable and reasonable requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadalin. Next speaker is Dee Tonken. Go ahead, please.
Sorry about that, I was trying to unmute. Yeah, I am the one that wrote the letter. I have lived here much longer than any of them. They moved in and started growing. And yes, it has been horrible the whole time with the smell. It is bad and it's really hard when you live in a nice, warm, beautiful climate and you can't open your windows. Why can't I open my windows? Because of the smell. So if I have to live in an enclosed house that I can't open my windows, why can't I require them to enclose their grow? And the other thing, I heard the other man ask about the water district. My dad is on the water board and I know it hasn't been asked yet. It just, it's hard. When I built my house and I've lived here for 36 years and to all of a sudden be inundated with all these grows, she says she was a 3,000 foot, well, 3,000 foot grow was not, was illegal. So she's an existing illegal 3,000 foot grow that now wants to go legal and wants all of us to conform. And yes, I am the only one that wrote a letter. I am not the only one opposing it, as you heard from Jose Sanchez. I have another neighbor who is just building a house here. They've had the property for quite a while, but they are just now building a house. They haven't lived here enough to realize the smell, but they will. Again, the springs, they're underground springs and I would really, really, really like to see the impact that it has on these springs because one of them runs down and, and my parents use it for their water. And if any of the fertilizer or whatever they use gets into these streams and heads down to them, my parents could get sick. I really don't want to see that happen either, just because they want to grow their marijuana. And I'm, I'm sorry, I am highly opposed to marijuana, so yes, I'm biased in that manner. But.
Thank you. Your time, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ms. McClure.
Yes, this is Carrie Lilly and Joel McClure. We are residents on the street and we just would like to speak in support of the project that has been pre-existing at the aforementioned parcel. And we would just like to give our support of the project. Also, just to clarify a couple of things, that the illegality that it was claimed by the previous speaker is incorrect because the, the pre-existing cultivation was conducted under the Compassionate Care Act of 1996, the 215 Act. And so it was, all cannabis was legally and lawfully cultivated in that area. And anyone who's been into Willow Creek would know that the, the town is a very small area. And in the summer, yes, it's true that the smell can be smelled from, at any point along the 299 as you're passing through the small area of Willow Creek. So to, to overly hype the, the smell, the concerns of the smell is to essentially condemn the entirety of Willow Creek. And to be fair, while we all live in Willow Creek because we enjoy the climate and the beautiful resources and natural resources of that area, we all, over the past decades, have been subjected to incredible amounts of smoke, just from the, the naturally occurring and some, in some cases unnaturally occurring wildfires. So I think that it's something to, to, to bring into consideration is the fact that while we all deserve and we want pristine, clean air, we have been subjected to pollutants that are outside of our control. And cannabis, the, the terpenes that are released from the evaporation of terpenes of cannabis are not a pollutant. And I think that it's just fair to keep all of these things in mind as well. I'm on the Willow Creek Volunteer Fire Department and I, I work directly with members of the community to mitigate any fire concerns and also serve the community for the medical needs because of our remote location and lack of access to medical facilities. So I just wanted to put my voice forward in support of the Enchanted Springs LLC's project.
Thank you, Greg. Next caller is 3053.
Oh. Hi, this is Greg.
I'm, I'm sorry about that, Greg. I just got out of order. Apologize.
No problem. You can hear me okay then?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, my name's Greg Gibbs. I work for One Degree Consulting and I produce the site map, site plans and helping Mariana with her, all of her state licensing. And so I just wanted to chime in and echo what Nadalin had said in terms of this being a very low impact, environmentally low impact farm. I've been on a lot of sites and I would, I would call this one of the gold standards in terms of, you know, aside from being very close to National Forest, which has been addressed in the biological, I would call this a gold standard and it is more or less a situation of more impacts to create the enclosure than it would be aside from the odor for the community. And while I empathize with Mrs. Tonken, I, I would say, I would agree with the other speaker that, you know, it, it, at some point it has to be a democracy. And Mariana, in my estimation, is a, been very proactive and is a strong member of the community by circulating letters, you know, to ask who had any dissatisfaction. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that she does have a well-serve letter from the Community Services District for her water supply and she does have the support of the Volunteer Fire Department. She's kind of more at the end of the road than the people that have an issue with the odor and, I guess, that's about all I need to say there. Other than I would encourage you all to, to read the letter that was submitted because there's a lot of other things listed in the letter as a concern and none of them are valid. And while this is a valid concern, I think I would return to the benefits of the environment and the community as a whole to allow it to go forward without enclosing the cultivation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Next caller is 3053. Are you there, 3053?
Hello, Thomas Mulder here, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, so I just, I jumped on, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One is, I'd like to remind you that before, there's something, there's a proposal that would allow for a site to be 2,000 square feet without the neighborhood concern. Also, you could possibly add personal use, so maybe 2,200 square feet if what, about that.
We lost you. I'm going to go on to the next caller and if Thomas would like to call back in and we will, we will let you back on, but the next caller is Moto E5 Play.
I think that's me.
Yes.
My name is Michael Sack. I'm the neighbor directly across the street from the proposal. And I just wanted to speak forward to my support of the project. If anyone would be impacted by increased traffic, it'd probably be me more than anybody. And honestly, I've never noticed any increased traffic due to this project. I know that Mariana does all the work herself and with her roommate who lives on site. And so I don't think that increased traffic would be a concern at all. Also, I know that she's a very environmentally conscious and responsible person. I know that everything that she uses as far as nutrients and fertilizers are 100% organic, natural, and used in very small and responsible amount. I wouldn't anticipate any runoff that would compromise anybody's health or environmental negative consequences. And, and, you know, as was commented earlier, there are a lot of projects in the area. There is smell in Humboldt County, not to dissuade from other people's concerns, but certainly this small project is not going to be a significantly contributing factor to that element, in my opinion. So I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you very much. The next caller is Katie. Go ahead, Katie. One last chance for Katie.
Hello, hello. Is that working?
Yes.
Hi. I just, I am also a neighbor of Mariana's and I wanted to express my support of this project. And I would like to also second Nadalin's comments on the increased environmental impact of the enclosure of the cultivation space, which seems kind of strange with a such low impact project as it is. To increase that environmental impact doesn't seem to make Um, to increase that environmental impact doesn't seem to make sense. And then also my other, uh, concern would be the ability of all the other neighbors to grow their personal, um, plants. And there's going to be a smell, I think, in the neighborhood and all around Willow Creek in general, um, because of just even personal plants that people have in their yard. So I feel like eliminating the cannabis smell in the community is ultimately kind of a, an impossibility. Um, so I would support her and her open air, uh, project as it stands. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and we have one last caller. It's Public Thirty Fifty-three. Are you there?
Hello, I apologize, my phone cut out earlier. The only, the only other quick part I wanted to bring up is, uh, Proposition Two Fifteen. So the claim of legality, I think unless you have documentation of not following Prop Two Fifteen, that's a sketchy road to walk down. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Any other public? Seeing none, I will close the, this segment of the public comment and I will bring it back to the commission. Go ahead, Mike.
I have a question of staff or the director, uh, regarding, um, the rules as they are with this, um, trying to get everybody legal with, um, existing grows. Um, and my main reason for asking is about the setbacks. Did this, um, applicant know that this was going to be a problem from whenever they started on this application process?
So I believe this is a one-point-oh application that originally came in and, uh, would have been completed as a zoning clearance certificate. And because they are, uh, outdoor and because they are, uh, small, they're requesting a conditional use permit instead of doing the enclosed cultivation. A one-point-oh applicant did not have the ability to know what the community plan area requirements would be at the time they applied. And, and so this is the only provision, this is the only area of the CCLUO that modifies the provisions of the CMMLUO, the one-point-oh, in order to address the nuisance impacts primarily of odor within a community plan area.
Yeah, I know that in the past with some other applicants and, and things that we've had in some other kind of neighborhoods, but there wasn't a problem with the setbacks. There was concern about odor, but there wasn't, um, anything about the setbacks. What, um, provision is this or do they have for making a smaller footprint at all? And it not being then applicable about this setback?
So one of the things that, there are different things to talk about here. One is the setback from the Six Rivers National Forest.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned about that.
And, and so that's one of the reasons that we did the biological work to look and see if there is habitat immediately adjacent. And, uh, we found out that this won't, uh, impact any sensitive habitat. It can be a little bit confusing to talk about a six-hundred-foot setback from other residences. Actually, that's a clearance that's allowed within the CCLUO. If you're more than six-hundred feet from any other residence on the property, you do not need to apply for a conditional use permit. So I guess that could be interpreted as a standard, but the CCLU allows two provisions to avoid a conditional use permit. One is a six-hundred-foot setback. This is approximately five hundred. The other is to enclose.
What? I didn't catch that last part there, John.
The, the other is to enclose. So you either maintain a six-hundred-foot setback or you enclose. In those cases, you continue with a zoning clearance certificate, which is a ministerial action. Um, although there's a special permit involved here for the reduction setback for the Six Rivers National Forest.
So there is no provision if you were to make a smaller footprint and have that clearance be changed in any fashion?
No.
No, okay. I just had heard that from one of the commenters, so that's why I was asking.
If, if, if I could, one of the, the commenters was, I think, was referring to the, uh, Small Farmer Amendment that you're going to be looking at tonight. But the provision, I do not believe that changes the provisions of the community plan area protections.
Thank you.
You, any other commissioners that would like to ha, comment or have, ask questions? Seeing none, does anybody want to make a motion? Go ahead, Ronnie.
I, I guess, um, maybe Portia or, or the director, even if this, this applicant were to go away and didn't grow, there would still be smell impacts on that lane, correct?
Uh, I could answer that, uh, through the chair. There are five applicants in the same area on the Enchanted Springs lane, uh, existing cultivation.
Thank you.
And Jean, can I go off of that? Then the other applicants, are they within six-hundred feet of the Tompkins here that have written? And then the other call-in that said he didn't want it because of the smell?
Can you answer that, Portia?
I can answer that too. Uh, there are three that do not make the requirement of the six-hundred-foot setback. Other ones, in, in addition to.
And those are upcoming applicants? They haven't come before us yet? Are they upcoming applicants?
Yes.
So I, this is Alan Bongio. I have a question. This is, you know, kind of goes to the same idea of the, the issue we were talking about in the Maple Creek area, the last meeting. Is there anything be, being looked at, at the cumulative, uh, effects of all these grows being in one area? I mean, it sounds like we're gonna have a small subdivision here or a small residential area that's gonna be inundated by, if we were to approve this one for, and the others get approved, we'd have four in one small area. And there might already be others that we don't, that are already there. So is there anything being looked at on that?
So I would say that that's why we prepared in bu, programmatic environmental documents, a negative declaration for the CMMLUO and then, uh, EIR for the CCLUO. And so that's when those female impacts did get looked at.
Thank you, Director. The other, any other questions? Seeing no hands, is there anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion. I am sympathetic to, uh, the concerns of a couple of neighbors about smell, but I, 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 I just think that, you know, I've spent a fair amount of time out in the Willow Creek area this summer and I just don't see that you can pin the particular smell impacts on this particular property in an area that, that has a fair amount of cannabis. And I, I guess I, uh, I will admit that I, I tend to prefer to minimize the energy impacts and the other environmental impacts that would be caused by having to put a small grow like this indoors. So with that said, given that I think this applicant has really done their homework and has tried to do outreach to the neighbors and so forth, I'm prepared to move that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared for Enchanted Farms LLC project pursuant to section fifteen oh seven-four of SEQA. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permits and special permits based on the evidence in the staff report and adopt a resolution approving the proposed Enchanted Farms LLC project subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Noah. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion. Ronnie.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the motion in a second?
Through the chair, if I could just interrupt real, real quick, I apologize, but the, um, the motion should actually be to consider the addendum prepared for the environmental impact report for the CCLUO, um, not to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Uh, I apologize for that, but.
Okay, well, I will, I will amend my motion, uh, to match what Mr. Johnson just said.
Excellent.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about the motion in a second? Go ahead, Mike.
You know, I, 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 I feel for this, you know, applicant, um, and the, um, what all they've gone through here, um, and the marijuana ordinance, the, um, cannabis ordinance to try and bring people into compliance. Uh, but there are some rules there and one of them is this one about, uh, when it's in a planning zone like that and the setbacks. Uh, so I would have to, uh, vote no for this one and probably some of these existing ones coming up.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments?
Uh, I'm in favor of approving the application and the amendment. Uh, I mean, for one obvious reason, that it's extremely small. And, uh, as several have pointed out, it would be difficult to pin down where the smells are coming from. And, you know, if we were able to do that, I would guess that this would be extremely small percentage of that smell.
Thank you, Melanie. Um, so we have a motion and a second out there and I see we have, uh, Commissioner Mitchell with us now. Um, I am gonna ask Suzanne for the votes since we have a motion and a second out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Bongio.
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Abstained.
Okay, Commissioner McHaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries with one abstention. Yeah, four-one-one. Thank you, everybody. So it's about seven-thirty. This is usually about the time we take a short break. So I'm gonna say let's take about a ten-minute break and come back and we will take on the next issue. So back in ten minutes sharp. Thank you. Staff report.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners. My name is Misael Ramos and I'm the assigned planner for, uh, Dean Chris, Chris Farms LLC. Uh, an application for a conditional use permit, uh, for, uh, and located in, uh, which is located in Dinsmore and is an application for thirty-five thousand square feet of outdoor, uh, medical cannabis, uh, cultivation. Uh, processing here occurs in, uh, as well as drying separately, uh, occurs in a six-hundred-and-forty-square-foot, uh, facility on-site, uh, where then processing occurs in a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot, uh, ancillary facility, uh, to be retrofitted to meet ADA standards. Uh, water for irrigation is sourced from two rainwater catchment, uh, ponds, uh, located on the adjacent parcel, uh, to the west under common ownership. Uh, the estimated annual water budget for the project is two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand gallons, equating to eight gallons per square foot per year, uh, given one, uh, full-term outdoor cultivation cycle. Uh, on the parcel itself, there are twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons of hard-sided, uh, water storage and, uh, conditions of approval do require.
Our legal notice is incorrect. We can cut this off. I'm, I'm sorry, Misael. Uh, this is, this John. Um, it looks like our legal notice and agenda identified this as being in Titlow Hill. Um, and that is incorrect. So I think we're gonna need to renotice this.
I see. Okay.
Director, if I could just clarify, this caused, this caused some confusion for me as well. Um, but it is actually in the Dinsmoors area, um, which is basically about five miles south of the Titlow Hill area directly of the Neyland area. Uh, you know, we didn't, some of us didn't know it was actually um, a place called Dinsmoors with an S, but it, it does come up that way on the quad maps and everything else.
So, so we're not talking about Dinsmore here. We're talking about Dinsmoors.
That is correct.
Close to Titlow Hill.
Correct.
Yes.
This is somewhere off, up off of.
And I, I would be happy to share a screen that shows a little bit more specifically in the county where this is, if anybody's interested.
Yeah, well, um, I have that and, and this. Uh, shall I, shall I proceed or, uh, are we renoticing after?
Alan, you're not unmuted.
I got it. If this is in the Grouse Creek area, that is close to Titlow Hill, but it's still quite a ways away. But I've never heard of Dinsmoors, so I just, it didn't, didn't make sense. Go ahead.
I see. Okay, well, uh, sorry about that, uh, ambiguity. Uh, so it is in the Dinsmoors area, which is, uh, down, uh, Titlow Hill Road where it turns into USFS one. Um, all right, continuing, uh, power, uh, to the site is provided, uh, and is used predominantly for, uh, is provided by generators and is, uh, used predominantly for the ancillary, uh, facilities as well as, uh, including the ancillary, uh, nursery. Um, pursuant to, uh, concerns the public has brought up regarding, uh, noise and light, uh, uh, more specifically noise due to generators, uh, the project is conditioned to comply with the, uh, fifty decibels or less standard at, uh, the edge of habitat or at one-hundred feet, whichever is closer for the language of the condition, as well as, uh, shielding, uh, the, uh, ancillary nursery, which is the only, the only cultivation-related facility that uses artificial lighting. Um, and the language specific to that is that the, um, applicant will shield lighting used in the ancillary nursery. And the language specific to that is that the applicant will shield lighting used in the ancillary nursery thirty minutes before dusk and after dawn. To avoid disturbance of prehuscular light. Conditions of approval have also been incorporated as denoted in supplemental one, excuse me, two. To bring the nonconformant parts of the access roads and onsite driveways into commercial. Commercially compliant status. So seen here is the, is the site plan for the application. The red spots are where the outdoor cultivation areas are. And then center right in the lower portion, the southern portion of the parcel is where some of the ancillary facilities, including the. Twenty four hundred square foot processing facility and the generator are located. And again, the pond, the ponds are on an adjacent parcel to the northwest, which is also. It is under common ownership and is also in the application process for cannabis cultivation. Seen here is the hall route, the parcel. Is the southern parcel there, which is accessed through the applicant's neighboring parcel there. Up to Grouse Creek Road, which is also a forest road and then to USFS one, which is the forest. Main, Forest Service maintained portion of Titlow Hill Road. Yeah, with that, staff recommends that the. Commission find the project consistent with the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the CMMLO. To, that the commission make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and. That the commission adopts the resolution approving crisp farms LLC conditional use permit subject to. The conditional, subject to the conditions of approval, again, which were updated with two supplementals. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The mention about the water with. Adjacent parcel and another application coming through. I wanted to just double check to make sure that that will be on the report for the other one, that there. Their water there is brought over to this parcel for part of this grow and taken into calculation. Is that correct?
Yes, it's correct. And the volume of water available in the rainwater catchment ponds on the. Parcel to the northwest of this subject parcel. Exceed the proposed water use for this application by about double.
This application and the other one?
Well, I think, I think all told, the, the volume equals the, the water demands, but for the purposes of this application, there is approximately twice as much water as it seems.
So there will be enough water for both permits.
Correct.
Thank you, Mike. I see Ronnie has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I just wanted to make your quick comment, Miss Al, that I left you a voicemail this morning. Regarding that clarification on location. So that was me.
Thank you, Ronnie. I see Noah has his hand up now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just am asking this because I. I'm not sure I have seen all the supplementals that came today or had a chance to process them, but. In the staff report for this item, there didn't seem to be any response from CDFW. And so I just wanted to ask if that is the case, or was there some late breaking response to that referral to CDFW?
Yes, response was requested and to my knowledge, response is not received.
Thank you.
Any other panelists that would commissioners that would like to ask staff any questions? Seeing none, I will open the public comment. Sorry. Go ahead, public seven, four, five, for I know that number.
Ah, you recognize that one. I can't, I'm gonna get some other phones up here, so you can't tell who the heck I am. We've, we've got the generators again, and Noah, you ever heard of the name of Robert Sutherland before I was talking to him in the break here? And, and it was obviously joking me, but he sure, he said, it should be nice if instead of generators, we had squirrels and cages to power this, you know, this off grid stuff here. So. Anyway, not speaking directly for Robert, but kind of a little bit. You know, we, again, maybe, maybe this person, if they're on the phone, would volunteer within two years. It sounds like it's a small generator, probably because it's just for ancillary processing facility. To go ahead and replace that with either a solar generator or array. I really appreciate Melanie, you kind of getting into this a little bit. My Apex generator now has attachments where it has decent storage, but you can get up to a thousand batteries to go with it. And this technology is going rather rapidly. I think mine fifteen hundred. You can use more than one, or they actually have solar generators out there, I believe, which are rated for three thousand. And that technology is moving rather rapidly. Strongly approve of what you were talking about regarding generators on this kind of project and things. And going forward and adopting some policies on those, understanding current technology, what's available, how much it actually costs to change this over. But again, I would really hope that the, the Dean Chris, probably an LLC or something. Or a person would be willing to go ahead and voluntarily within two years or some other timeframe. Convert over to some other source of power rather than generator. Again, it sounds like a small generator, don't know. I did have a question for you. It says existing outdoor cultivation. And it projects four to five cultivation cycles per year. And it's obviously not a single cultivation in the sun. So I'm not, maybe not quite understanding this, that's the same ratio you get for a totally indoor grow. That I don't believe is normal. So maybe you guys would be interested in clarification with that one. The other concern I have is. You have another application, and I think those applications should be lumped together and, and considered as one project. Sounds like it's even maybe on another application by the same applicant. It always concerns me when we, we break up projects in a certain area. And to smaller projects and bring them in, and then we have accumulative effect. So I, I just, my main, my main thing is, again, can we get that, those generators converted to solar? Or some other force of power, a kind of power. It also was mentioned, I think you're going across a forest service road to get there. Maybe I misunderstood that one. That's not something I can contest, but something everybody should be aware of. So those, that's my main concern against the generator and. Would appreciate communication. Maybe we can broker another deal. We had, good luck. I've had really good luck with that in the. With John Ford in the office there with those that, you know, the administrative things he does in the office there with people voluntarily doing it. All you gotta do is ask. So please ask.
Thank you, Mr. Swatsky. Is there any other attendees that would like to comment on this one? Give it a second. Oh, I see one. Tom's Grover, Thomas Grover, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, this is Tom Grover. Yeah, I would like to back up what Kent said. Last time I was talking to planning, they said that they weren't going to, after the next year, allow. Generator grows, and yet you're approving these with no end line. As Kent was explaining, the technology is changing. This is not a big scene for this particular grow. But I thought we were going to get rid of these. Now, many of them are fire hazard. And what I understand from fire captains is they don't have the time to put in input to these particular grows. And you're just passing these grows as if they're fire safe. And they're not necessarily because you haven't really guaranteed that. So I would just back up with everything Kent said. And if you could answer me where this came from that you changed this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The director would like to address that.
We haven't changed the policy. The. Second ordinance, the CCLUO does not allow generators. The CMMLO does, that did not change when the CCLUO was adopted.
Thank you, Director. Seeing no more public, I am going to close the public comment and bring this back to the commission for deliberation and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Noah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate the catch that. I think we can thank Mr. Swatsky for about the number of projected harvest cycles. That, that seems to, to require some explanation, you know, if this is outdoor, you don't get four to five harvest cycles. If, if it's, if that's actually what they're planning to do, then I really feel that that has to be explained. If, you know, I mean, the, the project, you know, it, it doesn't add up to me. And I, I will give Kent credit for calling that out because it kind of slipped by me. I don't know if the. If the planning staff has any insight, it, that question in particular was one that I would really wish I could ask the applicant or, or his or her agent about.
If I may, yeah, I would say that that was a noticing error. There effectively is no way that a full term outdoor cultivation can have more than one. Cycle. And so, yeah, part of what was contained in the supplementals was a. An effective reduction in the project size and scope. The applicant's representative came in and, and corrected us. Saying that instead of a full acre that they were cultivating, they were, they had been cultivating and intended to be approved for thirty five thousand square feet instead of the full acre. They also specified that they were, they were going to be using both rainwater catchment ponds. And they also made sure that I corrected that, of course, only one cycle was possible.
Okay, so that was just, okay, got it. And, and no harm, no foul. I just wanted to make sure we were really clear about that. Thanks.
Any other commissioners have any comment? Well, I'll comment. I'm, this is another one that has. The. Class four like road issue and. It's nowhere near a class four road and it's a insult once again to our intelligence to say that. Four wheel drive road into a parcel is a class four road and I'm gonna be against this one because of it. It's, it's ridiculous that we, we play these games. We don't do this in the real world. We shouldn't do it here. So that's my only comment.
Yes, if I could add something, I, I think to be fair to the last applicant. If we are going to approve this, we should probably. Add the same condition where the ancillary generator should be solar within two years.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Sorry, my internet's a little slow. Yes, I could do that.
Please go ahead.
Can you, can you hear me?
Okay, now we can hear you, Melanie.
Now we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So I'll motion to approve the conditional use permit submitted by Dean Chris, record number PLN one one zero one nine. Assessor parcel number three one five zero nine three zero zero six in the Titlow Hill area. With the additional condition that the ancillary generator be moved. And replay, be replaced by a solar generator within two years.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm just gonna ask Melanie about, do you want to specify a solar generator or solar? Power or something alternative that does not use fuels?
We, we could certainly do that. We didn't with the last one, but we could say either move to a solar generator or. An array, but I, I believe that the intent of our condition last time was to eliminate some of the environmental impacts associated with the generator itself. And so I think for the sake of consistency, maybe we should just keep it as solar generator. For now, and then we can all look forward to having all of these items agendized in the near future.
And can we look back at that motion? Because I thought it was more of alternatives to fuel. Like solar array, wind or solar generator.
I believe that was the case.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Is staff going to check on that?
It looks like they're looking back, but they, they're saying that, that's what was the intent was that it was some.
I think the exact language was solar or winds.
Okay, so it was an issue with how the energy is generated rather than the mechanism. Okay. That's fine. I, I will adjust my motion to alter the language to say, instead of replace with a solar generator. Replace with either a solar generator or use a solar array or wind to. How to say it, to. You know. Yes, the equivalent amount of energy that the generator would use.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Mike, go ahead. Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. And to unmute as well. It takes a little bit of coordination here. Get my hand up and unmute and all of that. So that's fun. Anyway. Does the motion include all the amendments, the supplementals that were added in here? Is that part of that motion? I'm especially interested about the road, the sixteen percent grade roads requiring pavement and that sort of thing.
Yes, I believe so.
Basically incorporating the latest conditions of approval as recommended by staff. Is that correct, Melanie?
Yes.
Okay, if everybody's good with that, I will call for a roll call vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Baggio.
No.
Commissioner Pellegrini.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner McHaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
It appears that it passes with a 4-2 vote. So with that, we move on to number four, which is Rockaway Investments LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bridgeville area. I'd ask for a staff report, please.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. What about now?
That's better.
All right, great. Good, switch screens. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, I'm Portia Salcedo, and I am the assigned planner for this project. This is a conditional use permit for Rockaway Investments LLC. The proposed project is off of Highway 36 in Bridgeville. The parcel is approximately 40 acres in size with a land use designation of residential, agricultural, and zoned unclassified. The conditional use permit being sought is to allow the continued operation of 9,948 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. And additionally, 1,400 square feet of full sun outdoor. Oh, the 9,948 is with light deprivation, and then there's 1,400 square feet of full sun outdoor. And then 900 square foot ancillary propagation space. This is the project parcel. And here's the site plan. The applicant anticipates two cultivation cycles per year. Pre-existing greenhouses five and six have been removed and relocated to greenhouse one, as shown on the site plan. This reconfiguration of greenhouses occurred because greenhouse six was within a streamside management area. Further, the southern full sun outdoor cultivation area could not be accessed, directly from the project parcel and thus decommissioned. The pre-existing full sun outdoor cultivation area has been removed and relocated to the northeast portion of the parcel, seen here as CA1 and 2 on the site plan. And to date, all decommissioned areas have been restored to their original state. And all existing cultivation areas are now outside the streamside management area. And within the existing greenhouses, above-ground soil bags are utilized for cannabis cultivation. The water source is from a permitted groundwater well. The storage capacity in total is 19,900 gallons. And additionally, for fire suppression, there's a 2,500 gallon tank. Projected annual water use is 95,000 gallons. The proposed processing is onsite, and we anticipate two employees. The power is from three solar arrays and three generators. Security includes gates on the access road to the property, fenced cultivation areas, and locked buildings when unattended. Game cameras are also proposed for the buildings and the cultivation areas. In addition to the site plan and the cult ops plan, all of these documents provide evidence that the subject parcel is consistent with the mitigated negative declaration for the CMMLUO. And an addendum was prepared for this project included in the staff report as attachment three. There were public comments previously. The property line dispute was one of them, a road access issue, illegal fence installation, improper reference disposal, and a verbal abuse allegation. Given these issues, the project was previously continued from the June 18, 2020 Planning Commission hearing. Staff is bringing this project forward now for decision again this evening as a property boundary survey has been submitted by the applicant, which was what was required to move forward. And the survey has been provided as a supplemental document, the staff report. And this is the survey that was submitted. I just wanted to show a picture of it. The white area there is the cultivation area. And these are supplemental images that were submitted with the survey. This is the cultivation area up here in that greenhouse. And then there's a stake here, and it reads 38 feet, two inches, I believe.
Portia, can I ask you a question concerning that, those pictures right there? What is that all about?
It was what was submitted as a boundary survey from the applicant yesterday. And it says the property boundary is the stake. And then the, I can go back here. The property boundary is the stake. I'll put my arrow on it right here. And then this is cultivation area that they're measuring from, I believe. There's also an email from the agent that states that there's a distance of 32 feet referenced instead of the 38. So that was a little bit different, but still outside the 30-foot setback requirement. So it's a recommendation of staff that the Planning Commission find the project consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit subject to the condition of approval. This is the conclusion of this presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Mike.
This is my night of questions. So I see a neighbor's letter dated June 17 from Mr. Morgan, Thomas Morgan, about a dispute. Is that why the measurements were thrown in there on the supplement?
I believe so. This was what was, what staff was looking for, to hear this, hear this project again, was that we needed a property boundary survey.
Okay, so whatever was written there by Mr. Thomas is not correct? Is that what your conclusion is?
I have to look, I'm looking at the staff report.
It's page 86 of the original staff report. It's at the very end.
What part are you referring to for the truth?
Looks like about the pins being pulled, you know, for his property lines and dispute regarding the applicant placing a trailer on his property and using his road for access.
I cannot speak to that. I, the only thing that I can speak to is that the boundary survey was required to move forward because it would show setback is met and they weren't putting, it was on the other person's property, cliff maybe.
The director would like to comment.
If I could add, the, you know, I'm looking at the letter that you've asked about, Commissioner Newman. I do not think that we can answer the question about the removal of survey pins. But what we do have is a survey prepared by a licensed surveyor. And that was in Portia's presentation, which does show that the greenhouses and development is on the applicant's property. You know, that is a survey that is stamped from a licensed surveyor. The neighbor, Thomas Morgan, who I believe may be in this meeting and wanting to speak, states that he was paid to have a professional survey completed, but we have not been given a copy of that. So it's hard for us to comment on that.
Okay, so what about the access road? It's completely on the applicant's property?
Portia, would you be able to share your screen again with the survey that Mr. Philstead had prepared?
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
The access road is the portion between the dotted lines. It's right...
Does Mr. Morgan's property go right in between on that access road? Is that correct?
What the survey is showing is that the access road, basically the center line of the access road is the property line.
So it's jointly accessed then for Mr. Morgan and Rockaway Investments?
Well, I believe Mr. Morgan actually comes into his property before the access road crosses on to the applicant's property. So I don't think he needs to use that shared road.
Oh, he has a different access road?
You can see, if you're looking here on this exhibit to the lower right portion of the survey information, that gravel road where it talks about Highway 36, Mr. Morgan appears to own all of that area that is east and south of the applicant's property.
Yeah, I see Morgan in twice, in two different places there, yes.
So basically, the applicant is crossing through Mr. Morgan's property on this access road.
So the question is, is there an easement across that road, across Mr. Morgan's property?
And Portia, do you happen to have a copy of the deed that was submitted? Yep, there we go.
Can you share that too? Can you see that?
It's small. That's better.
I don't see reference to easement.
So on that... Well, according to that grant deed, it doesn't, yeah, I'm not seeing an easement or a reference to an easement in there either. Perhaps that would be a question we can ask the applicant.
So any other questions for staff before we go to public? Yeah, I know. Before we go to public, there is one person, and it may be the applicant, I don't know. Ronnie, you've had your hand up, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. No, just a clarification from staff. On the agenda, when it talked about the site is supported by solar panels and one backup generator, but in this, it contained within a shed, but in the staff report, it says three generators with solar panels on, I forgot how they worded it, but on... poles or something like that.
Anybody from staff want to answer that question?
Yeah, one moment. I'm looking to make sure that that's right.
I saw that as well. I'm trying to find it again. I didn't notice on the preview on the agenda that it only had one there. So thank you, Ronnie.
Three generators is in the cultivation and operations plan. Are they referenced in?
It's on page five of the report, towards the end of the staff report. It's second paragraph down from the top. Power is sourced primarily from. And then it says three generators. Three solar panels, three generators.
Here's, there's both.
Right, three panels, three solar panels, three generators. But on the agenda, it only has one generator, as Ronnie had pointed out. I didn't catch that.
It is three and three. That is the correct, three solar and three generators.
Any other questions before we open up to public comment? Seeing none, I will go to public comment. The first public speaker is 3053, please.
Hello, this is Thomas Mulder. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just had a question. I heard you guys talking about easements and stuff like that. So I just am unclear if this project has the legal easement or not. So hopefully, before you approve it, you have clarification on that. Because I'm aware of one project that was approved for access over, the legal deeded description was a different route than what was approved in the road evaluation. They just had a prescriptive right of way to a different project I'm aware of. And it happened a long time ago. So just please make sure you clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Steve Brittenstein.
Good evening. I've been asked to, on behalf of the neighbor, Mr. Morgan, as he couldn't be here tonight.
Good evening, I've been asked to, on behalf of the neighbor, Mr. Morgan, as he couldn't be here tonight. First, just some clarifications on the whole situation with the road. It is a shared road, the property boundary is on the middle of the road, so they both use it. But Mr. Morgan has to pass through between the greenhouses to get to his house, as his, his property is on three sides of this parcel. And so his issues run into passing through this, this developed area that's owned by the applicant. Where he's run into a lot of issues, not being able to get in or out of his house on some occasions because the road is blocked. The survey was requested because the survey line was unknown and it does indicate on that survey example, or the, what was given by Mr. Colstad, indicating that the, the line, there was a post that was incorrectly placed, so perhaps that's where Mr. Morgan had that idea. But the important part is that he, he does not want the cultivation within 30 feet of the parcel boundaries, as this is right, I believe. And that, what was given by the surveyor does show that for the northern greenhouse, but not for the greenhouse to the, to the west of the parcel, that one appears to be about 15 feet off of the parcel boundary. And it also indicates that those recreational vehicles are on the opposite side of the road on Mr. Morgan's property. They appear to be the only residential dwellings on that parcel. And so, you know, Mr. Morgan's issue is that the applicant has essentially taken over the road on both sides of it, including on his property, where he lives, parks and works, and the approval of this permit would make the situation even worse. And make it even more difficult for him to get in and out of his home, which is the only way to get there, the only way to get there is, is on that road that's shown in the middle of the, the survey. Picture that was provided. So we, you know, his issue there is with neighbor, he would like to, I mean, we would propose that a condition of approval is that all greenhouses are located more than 30 feet from the property lines and that everything, including the parking and the, these RVs, the, the residents on the applicant's parcel are removed from Mr. Morgan's property. The staff report indicates that there was an onsite inspection carried out by the planning department. So it's unclear whether or not they, they were there onsite and saw these, these issues and still carried it to, to the hearing. We'd like some clarification on that. And finally, the staff report also indicates that there are irreconcilable differences between the neighbors, but just like to clarify that Mr. Morgan is certainly ready to reconcile the relationship, just so long as unimpeded access to his home is, is ensured in some way.
Thank you, miss, thank you, it's, your time is up, so I'm going to go to the next caller, 7454.
Hey, this is Kent Sowaski, and I can't remember who the, who the, who the planner is on this, but this must be pretty damn embarrassing for you, John, to have something as, as poorly set up as this coming through with the incorrect statements. I mean, when I came here, I was going to let it go because it said supported by solar panels and one backup generator contained in the shed. And just, you know, kind of asked maybe that that be the same solar thing again, but, but this is getting a little ridiculous. Clearly, you have a neighbor, and I don't know, maybe, maybe Alan, you can correct me, I just have the perception that pulling survey stakes is a felony, but that's a side issue here, but you've got somebody who obviously has no respect for process, procedure, protocol, can't get along with neighbors. If you had an inspection out there and the person's living in an illegal, illegal motorhome and that's what this whole thing based upon, well, this whole project should be shut down. This is just about unforgivable when this kind of thing happens. At a minimum, this person should be required to have a, a deeded access and a road maintenance agreement acceptable to Mr. Morgan, and should he not be able to get that, this project should not go forward. He should also be precluded from precluding Mr. Morgan, his legal access to his parcel. And this is just indicative of some of these permits you're granting to people, and I'm going to call the guy a dirtbag, and that's just, I'm calling the spade a spade. And that's how I roll these days, so it's part of the reason why a lot of us are irritated about this whole process. And I think this parcel, this project should just play plain and simply denied. And, and, and I can't see how, Mr. Morgan must be a very forgiving person to put up with all this, for this timeframe and be willing to reconcile. I sure as heck wouldn't, and I, I really would hope that you folks would deny this, this because I don't, I don't think you've got a legitimate person, especially if he's committing a felony. You guys look the other way, I mean, you have all this stuff, I know Pod's perfect and, you know, Humboldt County Green Crack is the king of everything out here. But you wouldn't see a permit going through on, on some other structure or something to a contractor like myself, or Alan or Mr. Mulder there, on, on a parcel with, without having clarification and having easements and all this stuff through there. It's, it's, you know, I just can't believe this is continuing to happen, but hey, probably Natalie and the Laff will step up and say it's a great project, so, okay, that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent. The next caller is Vanessa Valari. Vanessa, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me? Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Sorry about that. Hi, I am Mr. Rivas's current consultant, he was previously with some other consulting firms when he originally applied, and we tried to clean up some of the misrepresentations within the permit, so I'm just going to try to get through it real quick. First, the generators, the generators are all for backup only, the only reason there's three is because they're different sizes. Because he doesn't really need as much power at different times of the year for backup if there was rain and such. The other thing to clarify was that the county inspector was onsite, the building inspector, he was able to verify that there was no garbage on the site, that the RV is actually on the Mr. Morgan's parcel, not on Mr. Rivas's parcel. And also that Mr. Morgan has actually built a fence on Mr. Rivas's parcel because Dean came post the survey. The other thing that was discussed was the setbacks, and I sent the pictures in poorly, I guess, really, but the western greenhouse is 32 feet from the parcel line and it's on a steep hill, that's why it looks like 15 feet. And the northern one is the 38 foot setback from the parcel line. There were no stakes ever pulled, there's been a lot of assumptions made about my client, that he's a bad person and he's not, his parcel is just in a bad location, but that's not really his fault. He purchased the parcel and he should be able to access the parcel and use the parcel. And just as a note to clarify, Mr. Morgan also has a cannabis permit as well and an active interim permit. So I find it interesting that his neighbor's activity is not okay, but his activity is okay. So anyway, I just wanted to point all of that out, that some of this has been kind of blown out of proportion, and I feel like the building inspector was out there and did agree with us that this was all blown out of proportion and that a lot of this wasn't occurring and didn't occur at all. So I'm, I'm sorry if I talked a little fast, I'm new at this Zoom thing, thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Rivas.
Yes, I'm the parcel owner and I just want to state that all these assumptions were proven in my favor, I'm not on the guy's property. I, I tried my best to prove to the county that I'm you know, trying to do my best to, to get my permit back and make sure that I'm complying with everything. A lot of the stuff that has been assumed has been proven wrong and I feel kind of embarrassed that I had to deal with the neighbor that was attacking me like this over reasons that I can't even explain. I'm not, I just want to state that I'm not on his land, I'm, I'm complying with the county and I'm a law-abiding citizen and hopefully that that accounts for everything that I'm trying to prove to you guys today. Thank you and I hope it helps.
Thank you, Brandon. Seeing no other.
Alan, can I ask a follow-up question to the property owner, please?
Absolutely, Brian, go ahead.
So the question has been asked whether or not an easement or mutual access agreement exists between you and your neighbor, since the road crosses both of your property, typically there would be a written agreement that cements those rights of access of ingress and egress. Is that a document that you have seen, does that exist, or is that something that's been informal to this point?
That has been informal to this point, but from when I bought the property in 2016, the previous owner had mentioned that the property where we come in to, from our entrance from Highway 36, that everything, that we had access all the way to the property. I don't know why there wouldn't be access or anything like this.
Any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I, there was another public handup, but I, it disappeared, so. Any more public comment? Oh, yep, Thomas Grover, go ahead, Tom.
Sorry, I'm new at pushing these buttons. I would say the same thing I said on the last one. That if you're going to have generators out there in the woods, you need to be watching for fire. And, and guaranteeing noise and all that stuff, and I don't see any of that in here. My son is, is just evacuated Santa Cruz yesterday, today, and burning the whole town down right now because of fire problems. Just, just pushing these generators on as if it's all cool, it really isn't. And, and I don't see any of this guarantee that in two years he'll put something else in. Can you do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. So seeing no more public, I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So is there any deliberation, or would somebody like to make a motion on this one? Don't everybody go at once? Another option would be to continue this so they could resolve the access, the director's giving me that information. That should have been done before it ever came to us, so I, I don't know, I, my, my thought is to vote on it tonight, but if, if the commission wants to continue it, to give the applicant time to establish that, we can do that. Go ahead, Melanie, you have your hand up.
Yes, well, it seems as if they have worked out something between the two of them where there's a request to have at least 15 meters distance from the property for the, for all of his greenhouses, and it sounds like just one of the greenhouses is not meeting that requirement. And so, you know, I'm wondering what amendments we might want to make, just like to open that for discussion, maybe we could make it a condition that that greenhouse be moved or eliminated.
Thank you, Melanie, Brian has his hand up.
Sure, I'm not comfortable in moving forward with approving this project with the information that we have in front of us. I feel that the access needs to be documented and finalized, the setback issue needs to be resolved. And having three generators and calling that backup just does not, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me, and so I think the applicant and staff need a little bit more time to resolve some of these obvious conflicts that have been pointed out by the public and members of the commission.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I would move that we postpone this item to a date uncertain, that we continue it.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to move this to a date uncertain, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, Suzanne, could you please do a roll call?
Hi, Commissioner Bondio. Commissioner Falegrini.
Yes.
Commissioner Reedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
And Commissioner McHaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, I would make a comment on this, that it'd be nice if there's issues that are unresolved like this, that we don't see them, we, we spent a lot of time on this one, and it'd be nice to have all those issues resolved, we keep bringing them up, but, you know, last time it was about having CDFW included always in ours, I mean, this one seems like a no-brainer on the road going in, that there should have been some kind of a, at least a, a document talking about the easement. We want to get these things through, just like you guys want to get them through, so have complete packages for us and, and we won't be continuing these, because it's just plugs up the line down the road, thank you. With that, I believe that concludes all of the issues, the ones that were polled. And so we will move into item G, which is continued items, and the first one, and the only one, is Odessa Organic LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Maple Creek area. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a point of order before we continue?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that you, as the chairman, admonish one of the previous speakers for an ad hominem attack by calling names of applicants and other people involved, I think that's inappropriate and should be not part of the public discourse.
I have no problem with that, I didn't even pick up on it, Brian, and I'm not trying to, to play it down, I didn't pick up that, that anything was said, I'm, I'm sorry, and I would ask that anybody be very courteous of others and don't speak disrespectful, so I, I'm sorry I didn't get it, but thank you for your comment there. So I'll take a staff report on Odessa Organics, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, so it looks like I'm kind of having the same issue that Chris Alberts was having earlier, where are you seeing the full, the full presentation here?
Yes. Full screen.
Yeah, we are, we're seeing it.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so Commissioners, thank you, my name's Cliff Johnson with the Humboldt County Planning Department. So this application is, I'm going to try to go through the presentation pretty quickly because you've seen it before, this was at the August 6th Planning Commission meeting. This is for the, what's called the Odessa Organics LLC Conditional Use Permits. That's for two conditional, sorry, a series of conditional use permits to authorize almost two acres of new mix-like cultivation on a property that's approximately 445 acres in size. This is seeking to take advantage of the provision of the CMM L U O that allows for one acre of new cannabis on, for each 100 acre increment on parcels that are over 320 acres in size. So this property is, it consists of two legal parcels, which total 445 acres. If approved, a condition of approval is that they merge the two parcels into a single 445 acre parcel. Drying is proposed to be in an existing barn structure, there's a maximum of 20 employees. An additional processing like trimming would occur offsite. Power is provided by a mixture of generators and solar power. Power is provided by a mixture of generators and solar power. Irrigation is from rainwater catchment. They would need approximately 1.9 million gallons, which works out to about 21.5 gallons per square foot, and the rainwater collection capacity that they're proposing is actually 4.3 million gallons. This is showing the general location of the project site. The yellow is Maple Creek Road coming down from the intersection of Butler Valley and Maple Creek Road. The red is showing the drive on that crosses over one parcel to get to the Odessa Project Site. The Humboldt County Public Works Department has stated that they do believe the road meets the functional capacity for the proposed traffic. You've received comments from some neighbors and agencies expressing concern about the additional traffic that would happen on Maple Creek Road. So I do want to point out that the applicant's proposal is to use a van pool, which would pick up employees each day at their place of residence and drive them to the site and then back. The average daily trips at full buildout would be about 10 trips per day. So just showing a little bit more of the access drive when it comes off of Maple Creek Road. There, this is about 1.1 miles long to where the cultivation facility would be. It crosses five water courses, and they are proposing to do some improvements to that existing road. This here is showing the site plan. You can see the two large greenhouses. I do need to note that the applicant is proposing a phased project where while they work on developing the infrastructure to support the mixed light, they would be doing full sun outdoor or light depth in hoop houses, and there would be no lights allowed or proposed as part of that first phase. Second phase would then involve these two large greenhouses with automatic light blackout curtains, proposed solar generator, solar arrays to the north of the greenhouses there, and a proposed, the primary rainwater catchment pond, which is here on the right side of this. You can see in the middle of the screen is two existing ag-exempt buildings. They're proposing to retrofit those and use those for storage and drying. There would be a proposed ADA bathroom, which you can see right to the south of what's labeled as ADA parking. This is showing just a general aerial view. The Odessa Project Site there is where the two greenhouses would go. You can see the two ag-exempt buildings and the proposed primary pond. I do want to point out this here, which hopefully you can see, which is an existing stock pond that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has asked to have removed. The applicant has agreed to do that, is captured in the draft LSAA that the applicant, that CDFW has prepared, but it's not at all part of the project and has no relation to the cannabis facility. This, the county did circulate an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for review on July 1st. We identified 22 mitigation measures. I'm not going to go through all of them here just for the sake of brevity. We did receive a number of comments during the review period, which ended on August 1st. We've also received some comments after that. When this was heard at the August 6th Planning Commission Meeting, the commissioners wanted to continue this to allow for them to receive comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Do want to point out that those comments are attached in your staff report for this for today, and staff has provided a response to those. I do want to talk about those comments, and the CDFW response that you'll see was heavily referenced in both the letter that you received yesterday from the ATA Law Group, which is representing Friends of the Mad River, as well as in a number of public comments that have been submitted over the last couple of days. We do feel that it's really important for the Planning Commission to understand the facts surrounding these comments in the CDFW letter and also the Friends of Mad River letter, because unfortunately, many of them are inaccurate and reflect a mischaracterization of the project and the environmental document that has been prepared. So we do believe that whatever decision the commission makes, it needs to be based on an accurate understanding of the project and the environmental document that we are asking you to adopt. So I want to get into that CDFW letter and some of the Friends of the Mad River comments. First, CDFW states that the applicant did not disclose the whole of the project because they submitted the LSAA Lake or Stream Bed Alteration Agreement after the project, or sorry, before the project was currently described and analyzed by the county. The LSAA notification the applicant submitted to CDFW was on January 11th of 2018, and the application made to the county was in December of 2016. So almost a year after that application was when the LSAA notification was filed. This also comes after the county referred this project to CDFW, which was in May of 2017. And I do want to just bring up here on this slide, you'll see an email response from CDFW on May 12th, 2017. You can read here that it is referencing the project of 83,242,000 square feet of cannabis cultivation on one legal parcel, water sourced from two proposed rainwater catchment ponds totaling 4.3 million gallons. So you'll notice that's May of 2017. That is a very similar description to what's in front of you today and in the environmental document. So we did feel the need to point out that that comment from CDFW is, we do not believe, accurate. Secondly, I do want to comment or refer to the CDFW comments that state that the county is deferring mitigation by stating that existing impacts will be addressed by obtaining an LSAA and that the initial study does not include the whole of the project. These comments are also very heavily referred to in the letter from Friends of Mad River. And I have to say, initially, staff was unsure what CDFW was referring to with this comment about deferring mitigation. It became clear once we read the Friends of Mad River comment letter that they seemed to be talking to the entirety of the components of the draft Lake or Stream Bed Alteration Agreement that was prepared by CDFW. So I do want to talk about that a bit, because many of those things that are in the draft Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement have no relation to the project that's in front of you. Our understanding is that CDFW staff did go out on the site and walk the entirety of the 450-acre ranch and identify all of the improvements they wanted to see to the entirety of the ranch. So if you're looking at this slide here, I want to show you the green dots, which are on the access drive. Those reflect six water crossings that will be improved for the new road, or I should say the improved road, and then one new water crossing to provide an access over to the proposed pond. Those are the only aspects of the Lake or Stream Bed Alteration Agreement that are part of this project or that would have any relation to the proposed cannabis facility. If you see the blue dots, that is reflecting just a portion of the rest of the components of the Lake or Stream Bed Alteration Agreement that do not have any relation to the cannabis facility. So if you follow my cursor here, this right here is a stream diversion for domestic water for the single-family residents that is here. This dot right here represents a culvert that would be upsized, but again, it's very far away from the project site, actually on the other side of this ridge right here. Similarly, some of these other dots are crossings and culverts that CDFW wants to have replaced but have no relation to the project. This dot right here, which is in the general vicinity of the project site, is that stock pond that I pointed to earlier, that CDFW has asked to be removed, and the applicants agree to, but it has no relation to the proposed cannabis facility. So I wanted to make that clear, because a lot of the comments that the Planning Commission have received seem to be confused about the scope of the project, and a lot of that is coming from the comment letter that we received from CDFW. So I also want to address comments from both the CDFW letter and the Friends of the Mad River that stated that lighting impacts from the first phase of the project would be potentially significant, as I mentioned earlier, and this is mentioned in the environmental document. There would be no lighting proposed for the first phase, which would be full sun outdoor or light depth in temporary hoop houses. Both the CDFW comment letter and Friends of the Mad River also state that there might be a significant impact, because the solar arrays would not be required at the beginning of the project, and both are recommending that the county should be requiring more renewable energy and that the use of diesel generators for up to 50% would be a potentially significant impact. But in the document itself, it does address this, and there is a mitigation measure, mitigation measure ENE 1, which requires the minimum of the project-related energy be sourced from renewable energy from the beginning of operations for all phases of development. So both of these comment letters do not, seem to have completely ignored that mitigation measure. I do also need to point out, in CDFW's comment letter, they reference that there would be two acres of new concrete for the greenhouses. That is also incorrect and also not described that way in the environmental document. The greenhouses would have permeable floors. Going further, both the CDFW letter and Friends of the Mad River state that the project does not meet the riparian setbacks, and as a result, the environmental document does not consider habitat fragmentation from the project. So I want to point out, again here, the only aspects of the project that would be in streamside management area setbacks are related to the road improvements, which include, you know, rerouting in some areas, adding turnouts, and then for a new water crossing to provide access to the pond. There is one small portion of this existing agricultural building that is in the SMA setback as well. That is an existing building. The, if I can go back to my notes here, sorry about that. So further, there is a mitigation measure in the environmental document, which neither of those comment letters referred to, but it does require that prior to issuance of any building permits or start of construction, the riparian and SMA areas be fully fenced, and they are required by code to meet the SMA setbacks. So there is no proposal here to, other than the road improvements that we talked about, to have project elements in the riparian setbacks. Want to also point out a comment letter that shows up in the CDFW letter and the Friends of Mad River that assert that the initial study has incongruent mitigation measures, because the rainwater catchment ponds are required to both be kept free of bullfrogs, but that there is also measures in place to remove bullfrogs and prevent bullfrog infestation. And the county does not believe those are incongruent measures. The requirement is to keep the ponds free of bullfrog colonization, and it identifies specific measures to ensure that, that they are kept bullfrog-free. So we're actually a little confused about that comment. So mainly wanted to, sorry, there's one more thing that I did want to address here, which is, you'll see in the Friends of the Mad River letter that they believe the impact of the rainwater catchment ponds may be significant and require an EIR, because the ponds would deprive the adjacent area of this water. In that comment letter, they are asserting that there's 6 million gallons proposed to be collected, and I need to point out that that is inaccurate, and that does not appear to be referenced anywhere in the document. The amount of rainwater proposed to be collected is 4.3 million gallons. So just for context, the Mad River watershed, which this is located in, according to the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's information, the total annual runoff is just over 1 million acre-feet per year. The 4.3 million gallons is approximately 13 acre-feet per year, which is 0.0013% of the total runoff for the Mad River watershed. So staff still stands behind that determination that that would not have a significant impact on taking away water from the surrounding area or surrounding habitats. The last, sorry, I've got a couple more things here I just want to clarify, which is that both CDFW and Friends of the Mad River state that the document does not include enough information to evaluate impacts to oak woodlands, and that it therefore doesn't comply with SEQA Section 2108 3.4, which is basically a significant threshold for conversion of oak woodlands. I do need to point out that under that section of SEQA, conversion of oak woodlands on agricultural land for the purposes of producing plant and animal products for commercial purposes is specifically exempt, but nonetheless, oak woodlands are not, removal of oak woodlands are not addressed in the document because it's not proposed. There would be, at most, it appears to be one small, less than 12-inch diameter oak tree that might be required to be removed for the new access road that crosses through to go to the pond here. Further, the only area that appears to be possibly bifurcated in oak woodlands, which is what this comment is coming from, is this area right here, which is about a 250-foot stretch, which would provide the access to the pond. Lastly, Friends of the Mad River state that the project is required to be analyzed on the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, which is ordinance 2.0, because the applicant applied in 2018 for a special permit to remove that stock watering ponds. And so apparently, Friends of the Mad River believe that that would trigger ordinance 2.0 to apply to this entire project, but the CCLU ordinance 2.0 is clear and includes a provision that all applications submitted under the 1.0 ordinance would be reviewed under that ordinance, and this application was submitted under that in December of 2016. And again, that stock watering pond that they submitted a special permit for has no relation to the cannabis facility. So with that, want to just make the county's recommendation to adopt the mitigated negative declaration for this project, and to make the findings for approval, which include revised SEQA findings that were provided to you in the supplemental today, which address a lot of the comments that were submitted over the past couple of weeks, and then to adopt the resolution for the proposed Odessa project, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Director, do you have, the director has something to say?
Yeah, just, thanks, Cliff. That was well done. I just also wanted to add that we did request that CDFW be present at the meeting tonight. Up until 3:30 yesterday, we were under the impression that there would be CDFW staff here. Talked to the regional manager about it today, and anybody who would be appropriate to be here is on vacation this week. So I apologize for not being able to accomplish that, but it was our intent, our understanding that they would be here.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for the Director or staff on?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So there was a lot of commentary by staff on the comments that we received from our partners, that CDFW essentially dismissing or alleging that CDFW had misinformation. And I'm just wondering if we, our staff had staff-to-staff, you know, discussions to walk through, you know, what we perceive to be misstatements, so that we could, at the end of the day, have a project that both agencies were comfortable with?
I'll take the first shot at that. I did discuss this with the regional manager today. I did inform him that we were going to be refuting much of what was in the letter.
Any questions for the Director on that, Brian? Any questions for the Director on that, Brian?
I mean, I guess you answered my question. You let them know that you didn't agree, but our staff didn't walk through with their staff so that we could make sure that we were all on the same page.
Well, if I could take a stab at that, thank you Commissioner Mitchell. So the normal process for receiving comments from CDFW is usually to have an email and then also a hard copy, especially for a SEQA document. And I probably should apologize here, the CDFW comments that were submitted did come in on July 31st. They came into my email box in a flood of other CDFW comments related to things like notice of violations. I did not receive a hard copy, and so when this was presented on August 6th, we actually did not know that those comments had come in. So again, my apologies for that. When we reached out to CDFW after the August 6th hearing, it was pointed out to us that those comments had been submitted. Once we had a chance to review them and digest them, as the Director mentioned, the key staff has basically been unavailable. They were, I believe, on vacation, so we have not had a chance to sit down and talk to them about that. But we do, again, feel that it's very important to understand the information that's in the document that is in front of you. And if you have read through that, you will see that a lot of these comments from CDFW and Friends of the Mad River are not accurately representing that document. And so it's important for us, for the Commission, to understand before any decision is made on this exactly what the project is. You know, we may have some disagreements about some things, but the facts and the information provided in that document, we're asking you to adopt. It's important that you understand what that is and not be, I'm not sure what else to say, but misled by some comments that just are not accurate.
Any other questions of staff? Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's more of a comment than a question. I appreciate what Commissioner Mitchell just said. I appreciate the presentation that Mr. Johnson just made and Director Ford's answer to Commissioner Mitchell's question. I should just maybe disclose that I have a little bit of outside information here, which is not documentary and not something that I can totally vouch for, but I have heard that there is concern that the way that the CDFW handled this letter, even the comment letter that we received July 31st with the various assertions that are being disputed or refuted by staff, I have heard that it is a watered-down version of the concerns that local CDFW had about this project. I almost feel reluctant to put that out there because I can't personally vouch for that, which is why I was really hoping that we would have Scott Bauer or David Manthorne or somebody like that here to discuss this project with us. Because those are the folks that, you know, I have a lot of respect for. They know this landscape, they know what is out there better than the regional people do. And I don't know if maybe staff can give me more information about what they have heard from some of the local CDFW people, but I'm pretty uncomfortable going ahead with this. I mean, I know that there is some really good expert people behind this project, and I don't want to dismiss their expertise, and I think we may hear from at least some of them tonight. But when I hear that this is something that our local CDFW office had huge concerns with, and that their concerns were somehow overruled or watered down or whatever, then, and that worries me. And I'll also just disclose this, since I happen to be privy to the fact that EPIC, which is a group that I am still on the board of, submitted a Public Records Act request to try to get all documentation that CDFW had related to this project. And that was submitted right after our last meeting, but due to the way things go, that they don't have, that information has not been disclosed yet. It may well be that when that stuff comes out, that I can feel really good about the way that we have sorted out these conflicting accounts of the situation and that the necessary mitigations are being made. But I got to say that I feel like there's still some important information about this project that hasn't yet come out yet. So that's my comment.
Any other questions of staff before we open this up to the public? Melanie, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm wondering, this is more a question for staff as well. Do you know on what grounds the CDFW disagrees with the mitigated NEGDEC and the contents thereof? Because, as you know, there are three mandatory findings of significance, and those are adverse effects on humans, one's on wildlife, I assume that would be the one, and the other's cumulative impacts. And so I'm just curious as to whether they're focusing on that, because that would be what they would need to do, is to show that there are those significantly adverse effects on wildlife and the mandatory findings of significance. And secondly, I'm just, do you know if the main concern was that there were special, I mean, not endangered perhaps, but species of interest there? I'm just curious to know what staff feels is the main concern of the CDFW, or is it the size? Thank you.
I'll take first stab at that. So the, over the last couple of years, actually, staff and CDFW have worked together, I believe. And CDFW staff have raised concerns about the proximity of this site to golden eagle habitat. And I would imagine that you'll see some of that in whatever comes out of a Public Records Act request. The CDFW staff initially expressed a lot of concern about that. There was, there is a historic nest, which is approximately, I believe, 1.8 miles or so south, and about 2,000 feet in elevation below the project site. And then there was another nest, potential nest site identified during the studies that happened for this project, that was about 1.2 miles or so from the proposed cultivation. And that was the primary focus of CDFW's concern, as best as staff understood it. You'll note that in the CDFW comment letter that we received, that does not come up as And that is because we do believe that those comments were addressed adequately through the three years now of eagle surveys that have been done. And further, as you'll read in the environmental document, that the project is complying with the best guidance document that we have had available, which is a 2007 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Guidance Document on Potential Impacts to Bald Eagles, which is that if development such as this is at least one mile from a nest, that should be acceptable. Again, that's bald eagles, not golden eagles, but that was the best available guidance document that we had in front of us. And so when we reached out to CDFW and circulated the document, we were, you know, we did believe that the concern about eagles had been addressed. And you'll see that that's not even mentioned in this comment letter, so we do believe that that is addressed to a point of nonsignificance. Whether that is what is behind some of the concern that I think Commissioner Levy said he's kind of heard about or not is hard to say, because we can only respond to what has been provided to us.
I see, thank you. That does help clarify that. So it's more, because you're right, I didn't see that in the report. So it's more a matter of they feel that the biological analysis was inadequate, rather than trying to use the mandatory findings of significance, which they obviously wouldn't be able to do until they had the information they desire in terms of the surveys. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that I understood what that question was, I'm sorry.
So it's more a matter that they feel the surveys, the biological analysis was inadequate, rather than the feeling that the biological analysis was adequate, but they still feel that there is a mandatory finding of significance in terms of adverse impact on wildlife?
No, I don't believe that's the case, because again, you really need to look at the CDFW comment letter that we received on July 31st. And in regards to comments that they have about potential significance, it's relating to what we believe is misinformation. You know, the, over three years, or sorry, three years of studies now for the eagles, there's also a similar level of habitat studies and special status species studies that have happened for other special status species. And you'll see that those issues are not raised in that comment letter. So we must conclude that they do not have an issue with this species or those studies.
Yes, I did see that, and that's why I'm asking, because I was a little bit confused as well as to what in particular it was, because I wasn't really able to see what exactly, especially in terms of the actual regulations, in terms of the mitigated NEGDEC or the, you know, the mandatory findings, what it was. So, okay, well, it's too bad they can't be here, I guess, tonight. Thank you.
Ronnie, you had your hand up for quite a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Johnson. It was very informative. I just have a few quick concerns, comments. One is the 4,330,000 gallons of water for this project that they estimate per year, that's not replenishing the groundwater, that's not replenishing that watershed. And then even Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District was concerned about that project may jeopardize the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in 2014 in order to identify strategies and conservation plans, et cetera, et cetera. The Mad River Valley Basin is a medium priority basin where the groundwater resources in the area are stressed and subject to the SGMA controls. That's probably one of my biggest concerns about this project is this, let's face it, this is an industrial-sized grow in a very remote part of our county, on a water source that the majority of people that live in the county depend upon. The other concern is the golden eagle. No surveys or whatever. I grew up in the mountains, I've seen one golden eagle my whole life, and I'm in my 50s. Like I said at the last meeting, this is a very, very precious area that we're trying to put this industrial-sized grow in. They're trying to dot all their i's and cross all their t's. However, this, and then lastly, the letter that we got from their lawyer, I mean, that's like the last thing we need, is, you know, threaten us with legal action because we didn't do it their way? That's not how to make friends and influence people, I'm just telling you. And also, what about the shuttle thing? I'm not buying that at all. They're talking about, oh, only two extra trips. Okay, I missed the shuttle today, I'm gonna drive myself, now I gotta drive myself home. How is that addressed? Is it addressed? I mean, this is, it works on paper sometimes, but we gotta live in the real world, too. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Ronnie. We're running out of time quickly. I'd like to get some public input. There's two people, and I don't see any more Commissioners' hands up, so I'm gonna open up the, oh, oh, now there is. There was only two. So there's five people, so I'm gonna quickly open this up to public comment. So let's let the Director give what he thinks we should do.
Sorry to interrupt, thank you, Chair. I think there's just a discussion to be made, and the public commenters are multiplying. And we probably don't have the same constraints here tonight that we have in the past, because we don't have security here, so we probably can go a little bit later, but you do need to make a decision on how late you want to go.
Well, it went from two attendees to eight now, so I'm thinking this is gonna go a long time. And if we were to continue this, maybe we would get the comments we want from CDFW or a person to be here the next time. So there might be an advantage to continuing this one again. I don't like doing that, but I can't see how we're gonna get through it in a timely manner, so what do you think about that, Director?
I think you're probably right.
I agree with that. I think it would be useful to have CDFW present.
Yeah, I happen to agree with that on the basis that this is such a massive grow. This is a huge commercial grow, probably, I don't know if we've seen one this big, actually, but it's pretty large. So anyhow, I would entertain a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
September 3rd.
To the September 3rd Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second. Brian, the motion, Melanie, the second, to continue this to September 2020 meeting. Go ahead, Mike.
I don't want to do this again and not have then CDFW. I want to make sure that they're agreed.
I mean, I think that's the key piece of this, that I would really like to ensure that we get their testimony on the record.
The alternative to that would be for our staff to have a meeting with their staff and for them to issue an updated letter that accurately reflects the facts on the ground about this project and how they feel about them now that they have the accurate facts.
We will have one of those two eventualities for you at the next meeting.
Ronnie, you had your hand up, so. That was from before, okay, I'm sorry. So are we in agreement that we'll have CDFW either in person or a letter the next time? That's good. So we have a motion and a second. Suzanne, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Boncio.
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini. Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
On the third.
Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
And Commissioner McCabre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-1, yeah, 5-1, excuse me. So we need to also continue So we need to also continue the Rolling Meadows Ranch additional use permit in the McCann area and the CC, or the updates to the cannabis ordinance amendments for small cultivations and personal use finances approved.
So we would ask that you continue the Rolling Meadows project to the September 17th meeting? Need a motion and second.
Need a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Motion for that.
I'll second that.
So Mike is the first and Noah is the second. All in favor, roll call vote, please. I'm sorry, forgetting to do the roll call.
Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We have one additional, and that is to continue the cannabis amendment amendments for small cultivators. And the director is going to call September 3rd.
September 3rd, yes.
We have a motion to that. So we have a motion from Ronnie Pellegrini and a second from Mike Newman. Roll call, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. So Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pellegrini?
Yes.
And Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimous. And now I would add.
We need to continue the thresholds of significance to the 9-3 meeting also.
Also move.
So we have a motion to continue the thresholds of significance for equal miles traveled to September 3rd. We have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Commissioner Mitchell?
And Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Motion carries five, though, one, no answer.
Okay.
And last of all, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all, or roll call, please.
Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? All right, thank you, guys.
Looks like we carried five, one again, or five with no answer from Commissioner Mitchell. So we, that motion is a yes, and we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, staff.